For October the 8th, 2018. Please call. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones? Mrs. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Browning?
Here.
Mr. Rohr?
Here.
Mr. Hellinger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Mayor Riggle?
Here.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mrs. Keller. Roll call please.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion carries. Item two is invocation by Chaplain Jonathan Smith from the City of Delaware Choir Department, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all please stand.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the city that you allow us to be a part of, work in, and reside in, and we thank you for the safety that you've given to most of us day in and day out. We thank you for our leaders. We thank you for our mayor, and our manager, and so many other department heads and leaders. I pray that you continue to give them wisdom and direction. We thank you for just our economic development, and all the great things that are going on in our city. I pray that you continue to allow us to see success in those areas. In Jesus' name I pray.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Items four is the approval of motion summary of the regular meeting of council held on September 24th, 2018, as recorded and transcribed. What is the wish to council?
I move for approval.
Second.
And the motion, Mrs. Keller, is seconded by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call please.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion carries. Item five is the consent agenda. You may, if you'll please, wear this in the record.
Item A, acceptance of the motion summary of the Historic Preservation Commission meeting held on August 11th, 2018, as recorded and transcribed. Item B, acceptance of the motion summary of the Civil Service Commission meeting held on September 5th, 2018, as recorded and transcribed. Item C, resolution number 18-53, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a partial assignment and assumption of community investment area agreement and school compensation agreement for 759 Pittsburgh Drive, Delaware. And item D, resolution number 18-54, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a partial assignment and assumption of community investment area agreement and school compensation agreement for Symmetry One LLC at 2097 London Road, Delaware.
Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Browning, and second by Mr. Rohr. Roll call please.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion carries. Item six is time set aside for letters, petitions, or public comments for anything that's not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward at this time? How about if our guests from Baumholder, Germany come forward at this time? Would you mind come forward to these chairs right here? Will you come to these chairs? Look how rich she's getting. Come to these chairs right here.
Thank you.
And for the record, will you state your names and addresses?
Ladies first.
Okay, I'm Gabby Sala. I'm coming from Germany, City of Baumholder, and I'm working for the City of Baumholder.
Hi, I'm Hans Sala, the husband of Gabby. I'm a chess player and a retired German military person. Yeah.
Thank you. I just want to let our guests know Hans and Gabby have been here for almost two weeks now, and they had a very nice visit with the delegation for a week. Most of the others have gone back, but you were fortunate enough to stay with the Keller family and go on to see New York and Niagara Falls and that. So I just want to welcome you, and it's going to be sad to see you go home tomorrow. Can you tell us a little bit about your visit, what you thought of it?
It was great. As, I would say, as usual. Thank you to the Keller family for hosting us. It was really great.
And thank you to the City of Delaware for this beautiful program we had. We saw a lot of things. We are very impressed. And thank you for the Keller family for hosting us.
What does the sister city mean to Baumholder? Can you explain that?
What does it mean?
What does that mean to you, to be sister cities with Delaware? What does that mean to you?
It's quite a nice program that we have, and we want to, yeah, strengthen this program, spread it out, doing some other things. The more that we have done till now, and we are working on that, yeah.
And we are looking forward to seeing you in Baumholder.
Very good. Well, thank you. Didn't need to put you on the spot. I do have a small token, and we've already exchanged some gifts, but here's a, I know you celebrate Christmas in Germany, right? So here's that. Wanted to put on your tree that has the city hall wall.
Beautiful.
Thank you again, and I didn't mean to put it on the spot, but thank you. I did.
Should we stay here?
No, you can go back to your seats now.
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Delaware.
At this time, I'm going to ask Chief Donahue to come forward.
How are you this evening?
Good.
It's been a couple busy weeks. Whereas each year, fire kills are induced thousands of Americans and destroys or damages billions of dollars worth of properties. Many of these fires may have been prevented by taking appropriate precautions and following safety guidelines. During Fire Prevention Week, we highlight the need to prevent and prepare for fires everywhere and raise awareness of fire safety. Each year, the National Fire Protection Association raises awareness during Fire Prevention Week, this year's theme of look, listen, learn, be aware. Fire can happen anywhere. Whereas whereas while many fires can be prevented by following precautions, families should still be prepared for the possibility of a fire by having working smoke fronts on every level of their home. Whereas families should also have a fire escape plan in place to help get everyone out safely in case of an emergency, and to land two ways out of every room. Whereas when fire occurs, Americans depend on courageous firefighters to be the first to on scene to save lives. During Fire Prevention Week, we recognize these heroes and honor their safety. And now therefore I, Carolyn Taylor, the mayor of the City of Delaware, to hereby proclaim October 7th through 13th of 2018, to be Fire Prevention Week, and I call upon the people of the City of Delaware to recognize the importance of appearing for all fire and life safety organizations, and to celebrate this case for the appropriate events, activities, and performance programs. Thank you for everything you do.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I think the real thank you goes out to the guys that are out on the streets, day in and day out, and I always feature this month in our city newsletter, and I get to do the paperwork, do the budget, but I'm also able to be what I consider the finest firefighters in the world, and very fortunate, as we talked, we had four fires in the past 10 days, not in any one location in our city, ironically, to the station 301's area, 1 and 303's area, 1 and 304's where we've been putting our new fire stations. So it happens, it can't happen anywhere, and what we ask is for our citizens to be prepared, listen, and learn.
You guys are so great to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tom Homan, back to him, please. She's like, what? You're not trolling, it's okay.
My birthday.
Not on that. Whereas the City of Delaware has the responsibility to recognize occasions of outstanding incidents, and whereas our Thomas Homan has 35 years of local government service, including 19 years as Delaware city manager, and where under Tom's leadership and guidance, the City of Delaware has expanded its population to more than 40,000 people, and where his time has helped coordinate many major improvements, including the upgrade and renovation of the water and wastewater plants, the building of the Delaware Community Center, YMCA, the Sun Hill Parkway expansion, three fire substations, as well as numerous other city projects. Whereas Tom has attended countless meetings and all of those to that, and is always looking to see how this time can benefit its staff and citizens of Delaware. Whereas Tom's accomplishments and years of service were recently recognized by the International City County Management Association at its 104th Annual Conference in Baltimore, Maryland. Now therefore I, Carolyn Taylor, the mayor of the City of Delaware, is hereby issued this proclamation to honor our Thomas Homan in the City of Delaware, Ohio, and join by our fellow citizens in recognizing Tom's commitment to his public service and the impact he has made on the City of Delaware. Thank you very much.
No, it's quite an honor. I love this profession. I love this community. That's why I'm here, and I'm just, I can't say enough really how enjoyable and rewarding working for this local government has been, and a lot of it has been the support of citizens. Thank you very much, and thank you to my staff.
Item eight is community reports. Mrs. Keller, do you have anything?
I have none.
Mr. Browning?
I have none.
Mr. Rohr?
Nothing.
Mr. Hellinger?
I have nothing.
Mr. Schaefer?
We can be more serious.
All right. And all I can say is, Sister City, being part of that committee, it has been a long last seven days of entertaining, but we've had a lot of fun. So we also have a presentation by Central Ohio Symphony Update, Warren.
Thank you. I've got a little bit of material to pass around. As you always do.
I'll pass it around. Yep, I'll take care of it. Forty after you.
Can I just, I'll stand here another?
You have to sit because we're recording this. I'm sorry. And there's your clicker.
Oh, I'm supposed to do the clicky, huh?
I'm Lauren Hyer, the executive director for the Central Ohio Symphony, and thank you for this opportunity to kind of bring city council up to date on some of the things that we're doing. As you can see, and from the slides here, we're very excited that this year is our 40th anniversary, and it's been a very rewarding trip that we've had in working with the citizens of Delaware. I wanted to thank, first of all, the city and City of Delaware for support of our engagement of the Delaware community. Last year, we brought more than 14,000 people to downtown Delaware for performances. That includes our concert series, educational programs, and the July 4th concert. So we'd like to let you know what the impact is, and that's not only Delaware, but also to Ohio Wesleyan University as well. There are two main items that I'd really like to talk about. I'm going to hold off on those for just a second here. One's called the Local Focus Project, and the other is our Future Funds Project with Hayes High School students. But first, I thought I would just take you through a couple of upcoming things real quick. And the first one, we have opened the season on October 20th in Gray Chapel. It is an interesting program. Traditional work that we're doing is Rachmaninoff II Symphony, which is a beautiful piece of work. And then we are doing two pieces by a woman composer, originally from Puerto Rico, now in Cincinnati, Sonia Morales. The two pieces, one of them is a piece about the landscapes of Puerto Rico, and we're bringing in a guest artist from Puerto Rico, Maribel de Gata, who plays an instrument known as the quattro, which is kind of a cross between a ukulele and a guitar, and it's the national instrument of Puerto Rico. She's the first woman to actually, to record a solo CD from Puerto Rico, so we're very excited about having her come. The second piece is also by her, Tim Manduva's Court Dance. We actually did this once several years before, but our guest artist is Rolando Morales, who happens to be Sonia's brother, and our conductor's brother, who is the assistant conductor of Lion King on Broadway, and also has worked with Lion King for many, many years. And then another guest who has also performed Lion King throughout the world. So those will be kind of our soloists. And then we open the concert with a quick fanfare by Noah Goulet, who's actually a student at Ohio, I'm sorry, Delaware Hayes High School, who is intending to go on to be a composition major in college. So we invite you to come. We understand that the cultural minister from Puerto Rico will be coming. They've shipped in special drums just for the event, so we think it'll be an exciting evening. Second concert is our traditional holiday concert. This year, the guest artist is Kristen Basor, who's actually a native of Powell, and we worked with her in the Benefit and Barn and some other concerts, so we're looking forward to that. And then in March, we're doing Verdi's Requiem. It's a very, very large work for choruses, and the symphony will have about 220 people on stage for this particular piece, all Ohio artists involved. The real piece that caught Tom Homan's attention is called Local Focus, and this will be in April. This is an unusual program in all Delaware-related, and we applied for it and received a PNC Arts Alive grant for this, which is one of only nine awarded in Central Ohio, and the only one in Delaware County this year. We start out with Gershwin's Piano Concerto in F with Jacob Miller. Jacob is a native of Delaware. His parents both worked for the city schools, and his father's an accountant. Jacob went on to, in high school, to Interlochen Arts Academy, later Juilliard School, graduated from Ohio Wesleyan in piano, is now working on his doctorate in Cincinnati. So this is kind of his first major public performance, if you will. The second item on the program is, hopefully it's there, yes, Chasing Light. And this is a piece that originated, well, the photographer is Frank Lee Ruggles. Frank is a native of Delaware, a very compelling story of growing up in Delaware that we hope to share with the community. He was the National Park Service official photographer, which is the same role that Ansel Adams had for the National Park Service, and now the official photographer for the National Park Trust. I met Frank two years ago on the football field at Hayes High School after he was awarded the Hall of Fame from the Delaware City Schools. He had one of those cameras, you know, that's about this long, and I said to him, so have you ever thought of taking, using some of your pictures and doing it with a symphony? He said, nope, but I really want to. And so this is, this is how this all started. We've been talking on and off for a couple of years now, and so he is actually, we've actually commissioned him, and he's making an original film of his photography that we will actually have during the concert. See if the next slide comes up here. There's a couple pictures of his photography. It's just astounding photography. And he is, he's all over the world showing his photography and published some major books. So there's one, and there's some other pictures, and these were ones I just picked very quickly. So he will be making this film, and then to accompany this, we've commissioned two women who have Delaware connections to write the music. One is Jennifer Jolly, who just left Ohio Wesleyan as the composition faculty, and then Lauren Spavalka, who's a recent graduate of Ohio Wesleyan, and they're going to write the music, then accompany this film. So we're very excited about that. And then we will end the concert with, let's see what happens here. Ah, these are the presentations. We're going to be doing a presentation for Rotary while he's here. We're going to be doing a gallery exhibit at the Ross of this photograph. We'll be doing a field session where people can come and learn to take photographs outdoors with preservation parks. He'll be doing a high school assembly. As I mentioned, his upbringing in Delaware is really astounding from actually being homeless in high school and then coming full circle to being, you know, a nationally, an internationally recognized photographer. He will be working with DUC students on how to take pictures with their telephones. He'll be doing a master class at Ohio Wesleyan. He'll be doing a program at Willowbrook. As you can see, we're going to be running him ragged all week long. Jacob Miller will be doing a session and a recital at Ohio Wesleyan. The two composers will be doing a session for Women in Music in Columbus, and hopefully getting some Columbus people up here for that. And then last but not least, if Frank hasn't wanted to do enough, he wants to do a kind of a web-based photo where everybody can contribute photos and make that work. So that is what Local Focus is all about, and we would really like to invite you and all of Delaware to attend, and I think I have one more slide here. Yes, and we end the program with Dvorak's New World Symphony, which of course is one of the most popular symphonies in the world. The last thing I wanted to tell you quickly about was our Futures Fund project with Delaware City Schools. This is a project which we submitted a grant for, and we received one of 22 awarded nationally. This is a project which has us working with the students at Hayes High School, not necessarily music students, but the entire student body, and Rick Hayes Stranges, who's the principal, is very excited about this. We're going to be talking a lot about Delaware's change in community, issues of growth, wealth, poverty, healthcare, and housing, and the students will explore these issues, become in ways to envision the future of Delaware in answering some of these issues, and we hope to get them involved at a much younger age as citizens in the community. So quickly, there are about five points we're going to do. Collaboratively, define a vision responding to efforts to increase student support in the community. Define ways that the students in the symphony can raise awareness about public issues. Address the relevance of the symphony's programming to the society in Delaware that we live in. Develop a greater student awareness of their community, the role of art, and what it can mean in their lives. And lastly, examine the connections between issues in the students' lives and use music or art as a tool to address those issues in a positive way. So we're very excited about this. We will be back to report to you. This is a two-year project that we're working on, and we'll have students letting you know about what they've learned as well, too.
Wonderful. Any questions, Lauren? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you for the time.
Busy, busy company.
Yes, we are busy.
I think we should jump forward to, I think it's too long.
You could probably do 12.
Yeah, let's do 12. Second reading, ordinance number 18-87.
Ordinance number 18-87. An ordinance supplementing the 2018 appropriations ordinance to provide additional funding for land development, engineering, professional services, and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, and for the further reason to provide for the timely review of development plans and for the continued utilization of construction inspection services, and as such will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Council, if you recall, I made a full presentation at the last meeting. I do want to point out that there is one correction to be made in the ordinance under section one. It should read, in the second sentence, balance of general fund $150,000, not $400,000. I think that was left over from last year's supplemental, so that would need to be changed, and we could change that and bring it back to a third reading, if that's your wish.
Do you want to amend it? Do you want to take a third reading? Go for it.
I'll make a motion to amend ordinance number 1887 to reflect the correct amount of $150,000 under section one.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mrs. Keller. Roll call please.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I move to spin the rules prior to reading to 1887.
Second. Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mrs. Keller. Roll call please.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I move for approval of the emergency clause in ordinance 1887.
Second. Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mrs. Keller. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Let's do that.
We'll, 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 we'll.
Second. Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mrs. Keller. Roll call please.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move back to item 10, which is a 7:30 public hearing. Did you want me to read nine with 10?
I would probably go ahead with number nine.
That's your public hearing?
Yeah. Yeah, that.
The public hearing is actually kind of related to the number nine, so I would read them both.
All right. It's going to be fast, but.
Ordinance number 18-90. An ordinance finding that the creation of the Terra Alta Community Authority will be conducive to the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare, and is intended to result in the development of a new community, declaring that authority to be organized in a body politic and corporate, defining the boundary of that authority's new community district, providing the method of appointing members to that authority's Board of Trustees, and fixing the surety for those trustees' bonds. And item 10, we have a 7:30 public hearing pursuant to its ordinance number 18-77 duly enacted on September 10th, 2018, the ordinance of sufficiency at 7:30 PM on Monday, October 8th, 2018, in the council chambers at Delaware City Hall, 1 South Sandusky Street, Delaware, Ohio 43015, on the petition to establish Terra Alta New Community Authority as a new community authority pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 349.
Madam Mayor, before you open here, I just want to point out for the record that I did receive documentation today that the publication requirement of three weeks in a publication of local jurisdiction, because that was accomplished, so it was properly noticed.
Okay, thank you.
So council is familiar with this matter. This is a request. I don't know, David, if you can pull the image up on the screen of the Terra Alta development, but as council is well aware, and obviously the applicant, the developer of this project, has been in the works for a number of years, I would say probably over a decade, and has finally come to the point where it's being developed, and this is something that's exciting for our community. It's a unique development, unique topographically and otherwise, and it's unique because within the last two years, it is now being developed as one, one complete development. Previously was known as the Stockdale Development and the Terra Alta Development. That's no longer the case. It's one, it's one development. The developer has proposed a new community authority. This is from the outset. These discussions go back over a year. They have proposed this as a means to finance the public improvements, some of which have already been constructed and some of which have not. It's different from the two community authorities that the city put in place for the construction of Glen Parkway. Those new community authorities were initiated by the city to pay the cost of Glen Parkway, and that project, obviously, we have Glen Parkway is partially in place now. It goes all the way up to, close to Berwyn Station Road, and we hopefully will be completing it up to Berwyn Station Road within the next, within the next two years. The millage charge for that, for those NCA's is 7.5 mils, and that was established as a way to recoup, obviously, the cost of that road construction. Once the debt and expenses associated with Glen Parkway have You have a list of improvements that the developer is seeking reimbursement for, and those have been before you since the last meeting. Just for purposes of other projects, some of my research brought me to the talking with the development director for the city of Hilliard. Hilliard has put in place a number of new community authorities principally in the new Darby watershed, which is a specially kind of preserved area. And there have been a number of NCA's, I think four or so have been put in place over there. Those are at five mils, that NCA, and that was to pay for improvements associated with the development of projects within that area. Jerome Village, which is in Union County, is a more recent project. I think it was the home of, I think it was the parade of homes site this year. That Jerome Village project, that millage is, I think, closer to 10 mils. I don't think it's, I don't know if it's at that level, but it's, but it is a higher level than what you see in Hilliard. And then more closely, closer to us is the Evans Farm, which is right down the street. And that project, again, is a large-scale, very kind of comprehensive development which has a millage charge of 10 mils. So obviously, there is precedent for this in and around central Ohio. Really, what's before you now is the question of what this new community authority, how this new community authority should be set up. And I know that one of the things that has concerned staff from the outset has been the concern that we faced with an additional charge. Technically, it's not a tax, but when it shows up on the tax duplicate, we get calls from residents currently receiving their tax bill, asking us what that charge is for. They don't really distinguish between the two. Some claim that they didn't know, some claim that they know, they knew, and they're still upset about it. So this is something that I think City Council needs to keep in mind as it considers the request before you this evening. I should also point out that the, when we did the 2016 road levy, which was a levy that was going to raise additional dollars for road improvements, we heard, anecdotally, we heard from a lot of residents, many of whom lived in the southeast area, that they were concerned about the millage that they're already paying, the seven and a half mils, and why did they have to pay this additional income tax levy? And we lost over 70% of what we lost in that southeast part of the city. I think it's been pointed out that residents in that area support levies. I think they've supported the school levies consistently. We had problems with our road levy. And if you take a look at the numbers, I think it would say that that was a factor. So I think if you consider a new community authority, I think you need to drop it. I don't think you'd do it at seven and a half mils, and the developers acknowledge that their revised request to us is at five and a half mils. They're proposing something that we had suggested that .5 would be dedicated to the city for improvements, access, public access improvements to the river. So that's something to keep in mind, is the, what that impact is going to have on residents. I have indicated that I think that the millage rate should be at four, at something below four. I think that keeps the charge in the 500 to 600 dollar range per year on a $400,000 home. And I think there, that combined with the HOA fee puts the annual cost to a homeowner to close to $1,000. And that's an additional cost. I know these are improvements that are benefiting the neighborhood, and I think that's a plus. But I think that's one of the other things you need to keep in mind, is making sure that burden is not so onerous, that it comes back and we have to face it in the future when we have to do levies. But I do think the developer has proposed a number of improvements that have not yet been constructed that could be supported by the NCA. Absent the NCA, I don't know if they will be constructed. If you go out there today, you will see that some of the enhancements that they are talking about have been made, but there are a number of others, namely, the clubhouse, the pool, and other recreational amenities that have not been constructed. And so that's just something to bear in mind as you consider their request. So I was looking at this more from the standpoint of trying to keep it at an amount that's not overly burdensome on the homeowners there, because they're also going to be paying an HOA fee. Some of the council members have mentioned to keep it so that at some point it goes off, that it not be in place forever. And there's got to be a way to address that. So I think that would be another parameter. And also, Darren Schulman and our planning director, Dave Eflin, put together some suggested parameters for if you were to keep this from, to keep this from being requested by every developer, we're looking at trying to establish what are the guidelines that you're going to have that would not set a precedent that we don't want to be setting. So that's, those are just some of the, you know, general thoughts about the NCA. But I think there is, obviously, they wouldn't be requesting it if they didn't think it was important as far as the project. I know that it's hard to square the fact that the project has already essentially been built, but a lot of those enhancements that are being proposed have not been built yet. So I think that's what you have to weigh, is you evaluate their request to put this in place. But overall, I think this is, it's a quality development. Going back from when Dave Gottsa was sitting here on City Council, we talked about this project as being an opportunity to provide move-up housing within the Delaware City School District. How much of that move-up housing, we'd have to, we can ask Dave, but there is a considerable number of units within the Delaware City School District. Dave, if you can just, I don't know if all of that north of the hatch line there, all of that is all Delaware City Schools. So that's, it's not all single-family homes. These are, it's a variety of homes. This is a community that is not just homogeneous in terms of one type of housing type. They have, I think, provided a very interesting mix, a good variety of housing types in there. So those are my thoughts regarding what's been requested. There's a process here in place. You have the public hearing tonight to hear from the public if there are any comments. I just wanted to provide you some thoughts about it. If Council is inclined to move ahead, we just have to establish what those parameters are and provide that to myself, and so we can sit down with the applicant and come back to you with a, with what, something for you to consider. Because right now, what you have before you is a petition that has seven and a half that would have to be amended, because they've asked for five and a half. I'm recommending you consider something lower. But, so that's what I just wanted to provide you, my thoughts about the project. Dave and other staff members have weighed in on it as well. And it's a, it's a project that has a lot of, as they say, it's a good project. I drove through there today. It's a quality. What's interesting about that project is the topography. It is just a very beautiful piece of property that I'm sure a number of people wanted to say the way it is, but it's, now that it's developed, it looks nice, and I think it'll add to the city's inventory of quality homes.
Mr. Eflin, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay. May I ask? Let me see. Mr. Schulman, do you have anything to add?
Not necessarily about this, but in terms of the process moving forward, I did include a draft that Dave and I worked on about the guidelines that Council had asked for. To the extent you're going to give direction about this particular NCA, it would also be helpful if you have any thoughts on that, because presumably, you would, if you were going to pass a set of guidelines, it could be at the same time. So if you gave me feedback, I could turn it into a resolution that you could adopt at some point. So just keep that in the back of your mind.
Okay. Mrs. Keller?
Do we have a count of exactly how many lots are in the Delaware City Schools versus how many are in Old and Handey?
Maybe the applicant could come forward, perhaps, but...
Without making me count all the squares? I certainly could do that.
You two gentlemen can have a seat and give us the records, your name and address. I'd like to...
David Fisher, 207 North Forest Street, Columbus, Ohio.
Greg Stoudt, 41 South High Street, Columbus, Ohio.
Mike Shae, Post Office Box 438, Delaware. And the count in the Terra Alta section consists of 210 single-family, 96 empty nester, and 136 condoms. If you want to break down on the others, I'll give them to you. Under Rogers, it's all single-family, it's 79. Those are larger lots. And then Stockdale Farms consists of 244 single-family and 23 empty nester.
And those are all in Delaware City Schools?
No. And Rogers Bees and Stockdale Farms are Old and Handey.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify, Rogers is not in that zone. It's in the city of Delaware.
Right.
Would the applicant like to add anything to?
Mayor, members of council, Mr. Homan, other staff members, I've had the privilege of working on most of the 23 new community authorities that have been created principally in central Ohio, starting with New Albany back in the 1980s and coming forward. And so I just wanted to offer a few thoughts and clarifications here, if I may. First of all, we're here for a public hearing on this particular petition, which, by way of background, you should understand, originally started higher than seven and a half mils. And at the request or in discussions with the city manager, we brought it down to seven and a half mils before we submitted it. Seven and a half mils compared to most community authorities that are for decent or large-scale residential developments is actually a lower threshold. The community authorities, I think, in Hilliard are smaller and more special purpose than what we had envisioned here. I think it's also important to understand that while some of the public improvements have been made in the development, I am told that if you go out there today, you will not see a single house. And the reason you will not see a single house is what those houses can turn into and what the developer can afford to make them is in part a product of what the community authority can finance. At some point, there's only so much juice you can squeeze out of this particular piece of fruit, and the community authority helps you aspire to a higher level of housing and that step-up housing that's been discussed with respect to what's going on in the city of Delaware. I also wanted to comment with respect to the roads. I guess from my perspective, if I lived in homes that were in the south part of the city where there was a community authority that was put together for the express purpose of building a thoroughfare road, and then I was confronted with a tax proposal, I would naturally have a question. Why is it, since I'm paying this millage for this road, would I also be paying a tax? But here, we have a very distinct situation. This is not going to be for general public improvements. People who are going to move into this development are going to understand exactly what this community authority charge is for, and it's not for general-purpose roads or other things that you might, as an alternative, consider tax legislation for. And I think the final thing that I would want to make very clear from a legal perspective is there's nothing that precludes a community authority from assisting for paying public improvements that are already built. So from a legal perspective, if we could use this community authority to basically help deal with the cost of public improvements that are already built, that's a benefit to the development. That's one of those processes of squeezing a little more juice out of this particular piece of fruit and ending up with a development that is at a higher level because we've made it more affordable for those investments to be made and still sell homes at the price points that are the attractive price points in the city of Delaware. I guess the other, one of the last things, well, two other small things I'd like to address. One is the issue of staff time. Naturally, of course, since the community authorities that were created for the roadwork in the south end of the city are city-driven community authorities, the city staff naturally fields the phone calls about those community authorities. Community authorities that are not driven by a public improvement in that sense, but rather are focused on a particular development, are staffed without charge by the developer, and the developer gets to field those phone calls, not the city folks. So at worst, city staff would simply get to give someone a telephone number of someone at the developer's office. And the last thing I saw were some references to, and this gets to the voting question, some references to the number of residents in this area at full build-out. That is 2,250, but I don't want anyone to read that as voters. That includes the small people in these houses that are not voters. So if you are concerned about the voting calculus, we just want to make sure that we're clear what that number is and what that number is not. I am happy to answer any questions you may have about community authorities or about this particular community authority.
Questions? I have several. Go ahead. First, just some general questions on how community authorities work. So the way that this one is written before any amendments are made to it by this body, this extends into perpetuity?
It extends long enough for the capital improvement costs to be paid back at a maximum of seven and a half mils, and then the developer's plan has always been to drop the millage down to the level that is required for simple maintenance.
Okay, is there anything compelling the developer to do that?
Well, at some point after the community charge is used to pay back the bonds, the community authority's governance is turned over to the residents of the area. And so up to the point the capital improvements are paid for, the millage is going to stay higher, but at that point, you're giving the residents control, and they're going to have an appropriate incentive to keep the millage charge as low as possible while maintaining their improvements.
But there is a compelling reason. And the compelling reason, and we've talked about this before when we've been before you, is that by keeping the community authority alive, you can keep all of the public improvements owned by the community authority, which will allow them not to run the tax rolls as taxable real property. It's interesting when we hear the discussion about you don't like the phone calls, and I understand that. There's a municipality here, well-known in central Ohio, that didn't put all those little parks in a community authority, and over the years, the residents got very irritated because every little piece of property, whether it's an entrance feature or a little corner with a landscaping feature, all those go on the tax rolls. And the way the county auditor typically taxes those is at a constant value that's based upon golf course value. So it's like $10,000 an acre. So I have a community where the residents were outraged and came to the city time and time again, asking the city to take these as publicly dedicated spaces, because the residents were tired of paying taxes on little pieces of property that only had a flower bed or that sort of thing. So there is a compelling reason. And the compelling reason to keep the community authority alive, not, this isn't talking about millage, but to keep the community authority alive is to keep that property owned by a body politic, which keeps it off the tax rolls, which I would think you would hope to say that's a good thing for your residents and for those people in that community to keep their costs of homeownership under control, not paying for those little areas. Now... residents were tired of paying taxes on little pieces of property that only had a flower bed or that sort of thing. So there is a compelling reason. And the compelling reason to keep the community authority alive, not, this isn't talking about millage, but to keep the community authority alive is to keep that property owned by a body politic, which keeps it off the tax rolls, which I would think you would hope to say that's a good thing for your residents and for those people in that community to keep their costs of homeownership under control, not paying for those little areas. Now, and I just was having a little sidebar with Mr. Stipe about how minimal that charge could be, because once the public improvements are paid off, there is no reason to have a significant charge of any magnitude for the people that live there. The only charge would be to carry an administrative charge because we could have the HOA take care of all the maintenance. And I was getting ready to ask you, and you're going to watch a little repartee between the two of us, which is, couldn't we just have the HOA pay the maintenance charge for the administration of the community authority? So you keep the community authority alive, but with little or no, perhaps even no, millage charge. So it serves a very, I think, important purpose, but without a charge associated with it. Does that make sense?
It does. I'm just curious, at what point, who decides? Is it the NCA board, which is the developer, before it's turned over to the residents? Who decides, we've collected all that we're going to collect, and now we're going to turn it into the maintenance mode rather than the collection mode?
I think the answer to that is when the bonds are paid off that are repaid, the developer, the developer no longer has an interest.
No longer has a voice. No longer has a voice in the matter at all.
It's not unlike an HOA that at some point goes from developer control at the outset to property owner control when the development matures.
Right, but typically in an HOA, it will say, once 98% of the lots are sold or at some number, and what I'm wondering is, is that number written into the way that this NCA functions?
Well, the equivalent to that number is when the bonds are paid off for the developer improvements.
And that's written in the way that the NCA functions?
We...
So that you can't just decide, the bonds are paid off, but we want to build a second swimming pool, so we're going to keep this alive?
Absolutely. We're prepared to do that, but let me be clear. The NCA governance, to begin with, starts out as a seven-member board of trustees. That's most common. It could be larger. And four of the members are appointed by the city, and three of the members are appointed by the developer. And the board can never act unless a majority of the quorum present is the city-appointed trustees. So I don't want to leave you with the impression, and I'm afraid we have by the nature of your question, that this is a developer show from the get-go that evolves to a public or property owner show at some point in the future. The developer never has a majority on this board.
Okay.
And by the way, just a point of clarification, Ms. Keller, I suppose that 30 years from now, the people that live in the community, just like they could do in an HOA, could say, hey, let's do something, and let's assess ourselves for it.
Or the pool needs fixed.
Yeah, they could do that, but the pool would typically be through the HOA.
No, I'm replaced. Fixed at that level.
But it's theirs to control. They, as residents in that community, are making that decision. Developer's long gone, they're the ones that are making those decisions. But in terms of the ongoing nature and perpetuity aspects, it's really just to keep all these little pieces, if you look at all those little green areas, keep all those little green areas off the tax rolls.
Okay.
That makes sense? And I just want to go back to the issue, too. I wanted to kind of add something to what Mr. Stipe had to say, and I think Mr. Homan and I have talked about this. We've sort of found ourselves in a chicken-or-egg situation in that the developer decided to start to work, but I think Mr. Homan will agree. We have been talking about the community authority for 18 months, two years now. And shame on us, I guess, that we could have said, we're not going to start until we get this resolved, but, you know, the market was right, and the facilities were available to come out and start doing some site development work. So I suppose shame on us in that regard, but I think we're all, will be beneficiaries of the fact that the development started earlier as opposed to waiting until we had this final piece of the puzzle put together. By the way, one final point I might add. I talked to Mr. Homan today. This is, of course, just a first reading of the legislation tonight. We've been having some back and forth, and I know Mr. Homan's been busy with the German delegation that's been here. We've talked about, let's get together in the next week or so to continue our discussions among staff and the developer team about, some of these items are outstanding. So we're not looking for council to make a final determination on any of these matters tonight. This is really to get through this public hearing and a first reading.
Although I am looking for council guidance.
Ms. Keller, do you have another question?
Okay, two thoughts. One, I don't understand the benefit to us of trying to keep pieces of property off the tax rolls because we're the government, and the government benefits from the taxes and uses the money from these pieces of land to help fund the residents and the services that are provided in the neighborhood.
I will tell you the philosophical argument. The philosophical argument is that value went to the homes. This has been sitting for years on the tax rolls and CAUV property. And the philosophical discussion is to say, by allowing these commonary improvements to occur, the value associated with them has moved to the homes, the higher-priced homes that are built there because you have better improvements. I realize that's just a philosophical argument, but that is the argument. But I will tell you, it is real. I can tell you the community, the community was New Albany, Ohio, where people at New Albany Link Golf Course said, we're tired of getting these tax bills because these are little areas that, in some cases, are just a flower bed or an entrance feature, and they just bugged the city to take them over, to take them as public lands to get them off the tax roll. Because the theory was, we are paying taxes. The value is in our homes. We shouldn't be paying for these green areas that support us.
I would just add as well that what happens if those areas do become taxable, just in terms of why it grates on people, is that the tax bill, relatively small, but seemingly disproportionate to the amount of acres, ends up becoming part of the HOA fee. So where that comes to roost is with the HOA. And so somewhere along the way, you're going to have the HOA having interesting discussions about, why is it we have to do this? And those are the things that David's referring to at New Albany Link.
Right, and additionally, we had this discussion on another zoning, Mr. Homan and Mr. Reflon, a few years ago, where you've got, a lot of these improvements are for the benefit of the public at large, all the walking paths and bike paths, and you run the risk that over time, people live here and say, why am I paying the tax bill on this property that Joe Blow that lives three miles away gets to ride his bicycle through every day? So, I mean, it's all philosophical discussion, I realize.
I mean, my HOA pays the tax bill on the major bike path that gets everybody to the Y, and I don't remember anyone ever thinking of that or complaining about that. Maybe we should?
Uh-oh. That wasn't where I wanted us to go.
I'd related directly to this, but I appreciate Darren and Dave coming up with some guidelines going forward on this. I would just suggest, Mr. Shade or somebody provide this with some guidance, and you can take a look at those as well, so we can, as comprehensive as we can. Couple thoughts. One is, in regard to what happened with the levy, we lost by 60% citywide. That other 11% down there, it is not what we should use as a determination of whether this makes sense or not. I think we feel this on its own merits. Doesn't make sense for the city, doesn't make sense for the people living there to do this. And then secondly, I know that, I think, wherever it was, 7.5, we're now at 5.5. Part of that goes to cities, makes sense for that access on the river. But I guess I'd like to hear is, what's really reasonable, keeping in mind towns' concerns, about keeping the costs as low as we can for people that live there and allowing these improvements to get paid off there is, what do we really need to be? Be true ideal, and you do it.
I will tell you that it's a squeeze at five and a half, at five. So basically, with a half a mil going to the city, that's a squeeze. We're not going to recover all those costs that are on that list right now. And that list isn't a comprehensive list. You know, there's been some additional discussion at our end, just as Mr. Homan, on behalf of the city, has been looking at justifying these costs. I know you reached out to some local engineers to ask to do some value engineering. We're doing the same thing. It'd be a perfect example. The roundabout down on Brawmiller Road is an incredibly expensive roundabout. And if you'll notice, unlike the original Brawmiller improvements, that were simply going to be some turn lanes and such on Brawmiller Road and improvements on the road itself, if you see all the green down there at the south end of this area, that's all property, and this kind of, this kind of gets to Ms. Keller's point as well, that's all property that now has had to be moved in to just accommodate the roundabout. I think the roundabout is well in excess of $1 million in and of itself. It's not on the list right now. And that doesn't include, what you often see with the community authority is, including the real property that's put into the community authority. So a lot of community authorities, and Mr. Stipe can attest to this, a lot of community authorities around central Ohio, all that green would have a value associated with it, and the developer would be reimbursed for putting that property in the community authority. They haven't asked for that. But just that roundabout alone, I think it's like $1.6 million. And that was something we had never contemplated, we had never engineered, but your city engineering staff insisted that we do it and insisted that we do it at a really high standard. So that's just one example of where this, even at five mils, this thing will not recover the kind of costs that are going into this project from this point forward. Even just the improvements that haven't been built yet in the roundabout and those sorts of things won't recover.
Why won't the five mils be recovered if it's going to be paid off when the, or it's going to end when the bonds are paid off? Are you going to lower the amenities and features? Is that what you're talking about?
No.
No.
I mean, because I was going to ask if you're at 50 or 75 or 10.
Well...
Is this a term period?
Well, it has to do with the term period, but, you know, when we started out at something in excess of seven and a half mils, we were also talking about...
What did you start out at?
I'm sorry, I think we were around nine. Yeah. When we started out, we were also talking about funding what could have amounted to eight or nine million dollars worth of public community facility, these kinds of improvements. We came down to seven and a half, and we started looking at, because there's only so much play on how far you can push this out because there's an interest cost involved in the debt. So then we started talking about six, seven million dollars worth of improvements. If we come down to five, we're talking about recovering more like four and a half to five million dollars worth of improvements.
Okay, so the improvements do change with...
Yes. Yes. And you could push it out as far as you possibly can, but at some point, there's a limit.
But there is a financial matrix you go through. It's how much millage will compensate for how much improvement, over what period of time.
It's getting a 20-year loan on a car. You know, it's like...
Same thing.
I was offered that last time.
The one thing I can't wrap my brain around is, why not just say, the HOA fee is $1,000 per year, and collect it that way? And then when the neighborhood reaches that tipping point where the residents take over, they take over, and then they can decide at what level they want to maintain the amenities in their neighborhood.
Man, I took it for a step at this. The alternative is not between the community development charge and the HOA fee when it comes to the initial capital costs of these improvements. The HOA fee cannot possibly bear those capital costs and stay competitive. The alternative is between a community development charge or trying to push the costs of the houses higher to recover the public improvement costs. That's where the capital payback comes from in the first instance. The HOA fee is more about ongoing maintenance.
And I agree with that, but I would go on to say that HOA fees for the first eight to 10 years of development never cover the costs. The developer supplements those because you can't charge enough, especially in the early years when you have, you take, for instance, this development, some of you have been down, you've seen that entrance feature. When you put 10 or 15 homes in there, there's not enough money, no matter what you charge, to keep all the grass mowed and all the irrigating and the trees fertilized. So HOAs are always a losing proposition. In fact, even when they get to full stability at full build-out and ownership, the best you can hope for is you collect enough money to pay to maintain the property, which is why we've talked about the tax issue over on the community authority, because it helps the community to act better and to look better and to stay a higher quality. Because what happens over time is, people push the issue of, I don't want to pay the HOA charge because it's getting too high, I don't want to pay it.
Okay, so it's not for the residents, it's not to pay the improvements that will be in the neighborhood? So those are the improvements that the developer typically pays for. But in this case, you're wanting a community authority to pay for those.
Well, when you say typically, we point to examples throughout central Ohio where community authorities are used to pay for some of these infrastructure improvements. We'd also suggest to you that we're offering a higher-quality development, and a lot of these amenities we're going to put in place are out of character for a community that does not have a community authority, but simply can't afford them.
Is there a community authority in Glen Ross, for example?
No, just the NCA that supports Glen Parkway.
But it doesn't, so does the NCA that supports Glen Parkway pay anything to the two swimming pools, any of the walking paths or parks or anything there?
No, and that's, you know, that's come up, and it's hard to square the two. I think the difference is the economics of the development of that whole Glen Ross area occurred at a time when lot prices were different, infrastructure costs were different. But you're right, the developer just put in a roundabout, just build a clubhouse and just build a pool. But it is, they are different types of developments.
I did Glen Ross. Glen Ross was before, really, the heyday of community authorities, NCA's. I think New Albany was about the only one around back then. Additionally, Mr. Homan's right that Glen Ross occurred before the 2008 meltdown, and all of the lots that have come online at Glen Ross since the meltdown, when Polte came in, have an extremely low basis just because of the business deal that occurred. And that's not, no, this is not disparaging on our good friends at Polte, it's just they have an extremely low basis in those lots, just because of the way they acquired the Dominion assets over time. So, you know, there is a lot of kind of gas in that tank to be able to do those sorts of things. Compared to Terra Alta in particular, that was acquired just before 2008, has been carried now. If you recall how many times I've been up here begging for one more year on our development plan so it didn't expire, and I think Mr. Reflon will attest to that, that there's been, there's been a lot of carrying costs in Terra Alta for a lot of years before we got to the place where we are now. So it is baked, Mr. Homan, it's baked into the underlying economics of the deal.
Mr. Homan, any comments? Look like they're brewing in there.
Yeah. Well, I still come back, I kind of share Ms. Keller's concerns from HOA/NCA costs. And yes, I understand, you have the NCA so that you can market your houses at a lower entry price to get those people in, and then they're paying for however long that the NCA is in effect to pay back. But going back, when we were talking about the NCA, and I wrote down this quote here, you said, the NCA charges would, not for general public improvements, but then later on, you're saying, but this is going to pay for all the things that the general public can use, the walking paths and this and that and the next thing. So that doesn't square with me. The other part of it is, I just, I think using an NCA is... How do I say that? I don't think that does homeowners justice because I don't know if they necessarily know what they're going and getting into. Now, yeah, you can say, yeah, we disclose all this, you sign all this, but I just, I have issues from that standpoint. And when we go back, and I hear this now, not necessarily NCA, but I hear this just when we had the apartment deals here, or the last one, developers are like, well, if you don't want to do that, well, then we're just going to build like these Quonsetts, and they're going to be like this, and heaven forbid. And it's like, no, you're not, because nobody will buy those. no you're not, because nobody will buy those. So I, I kind of get taken back, and, and I, I really, I put back on my heels when every time a developer comes in here, says, we have to have this, or else we're not going to build a quality product. It's like, well, if you don't build a quality product, you're not going to be a business. So I, that, that also doesn't square with me. So I just, I don't see where an NCA is beneficial to the city. I don't see where it's beneficial to the homeowners. So that's where I stand.
Mr. Worthing, have a minute?
I don't have any question.
Okay. Okay, at this time, let's, um, open up to the public and see what others have to say.
And while you're up there, I just do have one more procedural question. Councilwoman Keller mentioned council might amend this application. From a strictly mechanical standpoint, the only thing you have in front of you is the approve or disapprove, uh, and then the developer would have to go and do an amendment to their petition, which you could have voted up or down, but council's late, isn't in the power to say, oh, we'll just make it two mils, it would have to be the developer. Amending the petition, we'd still keep our regular timeline, and then council would accept that amended petition and vote up or down on that.
Thank you for the clarification. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward at this time? If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jennifer Popham, P-O-P-H-A-M, and my address is 3950 Ryland Court, Powell, 43065. I was born and raised in Delaware City. I'm a 1981 graduate of Delaware Hays, and I'm a Realtor, and I've been a Realtor since 2003, so I've seen the good, the bad, the ugly, and I can answer your question about why the NCA will be good for the homeowners. But first, I want to tell you my story. My husband and I got married in 2001, he was a widower, and I was a single mother divorced, and we lived in Sunnyview Farms. We started looking for that move up home, and there aren't any. As of today, in the MLS, there are three houses for sale above 375, 375,000. One is in contract, but the two that are active are both on Hills Miller Road and have more than two acres. And in the past year, every house that has sold over 375 has come with at least an acre and a half, and as much as 10 acres. And the average days on market was 13. So there is nothing for somebody who's looking for a move up home and who wants to be in Delaware City, I mean, nothing, and if you can find that one property, you have to buy something with acreage, and if you want just a small yard, there's not one single thing available. So I think there's a desperate need for the development. And the reason that it's good for the homeowners is because, for example, if the price of the home was going to be 400,000 without the NCA, it might be 550, and 550 may be too much for a homeowner to bear, and then they couldn't afford to purchase the home and stay in Delaware City. So that's why it's good for the, the public. So I, I really, I urge you to vote to approve the NCA, I think it's very desperately needed. And I, as a Realtor, I've sold houses in Grove City and Hill Yard in New Albany and Gulf Village where they do have them, and it's explained to the buyer when we look at the house, it's explained to the buyer again when they make an offer, it's explained to the buyer by the title company at the closing table. So it would surprise me that a buyer, a year later, would call and be upset and not understand what the charge was for, why they're paying it, because it has been explained to them more than once through the process.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you have any questions?
Anyone else that would like to come forward at this time? Mike, you're on the list, did you change your mind?
I did, I know we were just supposed to sign up, we were going to represent our client. I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
See, you won't, you won't be me yet. Okay, I, I think it's also very important, and I'll be happy to get you the numbers on, on what this, what this community authority and what the development's going to mean to this community. I mean, we've supplied that data to you, but I didn't pull off the old agricultural numbers, and I can do that. That's very easy to do, and you would be stunned. I mean, you're talking, you're talking, uh, just the, just the numbers that we have, that we've supplied to you on, on the revenues to the schools, just the, just the value. In order to get those revenues, the houses have to be at extremely high values, to get the numbers to generate, whether it's Old and Tangy schools or whether it's Delaware City schools. And one of the important things is, is that, that out of the chapter 349.07, that set the standard for notification. It's mandated in that, in that statute, that you must include this language at the time of the initial sale, at the time of all subsequent sales, it must be in there. And so everybody's going to be on notice, you're not going to avoid that. And, and I understand that people, people had, have questions about the, the two, what I call public NCA's in the city of Delaware. But when you look at this, this is totally private. So I, I think that there's, there are unique benefits here, and, and I will be happy to provide that agricultural information for you, uh, before this would come up for the next vote or your consideration. But I think that, you know, in a perfect world, maybe not. But this, you're substituting, you are substituting your experience and your thoughts for what the state legislature passed. They permitted this, and I can, I can assure you, if, if you've read some of the stuff that I've given you, you'll find that there's a lot more charges that the owner can, that can put in for. Um, and they, I think they've been very prudent in their approach to this, and understand that, you know, they're not trying to be over the top on it. But there is a lot of expense in this stuff, and it keeps going up. The city engineer and I were talking tonight, just the general cost in his area, in his arena, for asphalt, for just the basic things, you just, you passed a supplement tonight to deal with that. Uh, so it's, it's something that we have to be concerned about, but it started before I was mayor the second time, and it has continued in that dialogue, that this city has been concerned about having more upscale housing. Now it's time to say, what are we going to do to make that happen? And what are we going to make that, to do to make that happen for our Delaware City schools? Not just the city, for our city schools and for our overall benefit in this community. And it's time for us to step to the plate and say, this is what we need to do.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public that would like to come forward at this time? Close the public hearing.
I think, my opinion, it's just my opinion, is that, one, it is a great product for the city. I think the benefits of the NCA far outweigh the risks and the downside. But there at one figure, Tom said another figure, I would ask that there, these negotiations take place between staff and developers, come up with something that will allow them to finance most of what needs to be financed over a reasonable period of time without being over the burdens of on homeowners. I don't know what that correct number is, but I'm sure it could arrive on.
I look at seven and a half, we just get it paid off quicker if they tell us it's going to fall off. So we go to five and a half, it's just going to take that much longer.
Right, I guess that's the point in that is-
What difference does it make?
So that, that seven and a half, the homeowners are paying more, but they're paying it for less pretty times, just like any financing. So now it drops off, and if they beat the homeowners, become managers of the NCA more quickly, which in my mind is better, shorter, shorter-term debt generally in my mind is better than longer-term debt if you can afford it, all right? So it, I don't know what that number is, but I'd like to have a smart people to figure it out.
Hey, Tom, do we have an idea of the different services, uh, amenities, or, yeah, offered at 7.5 versus different ones at 10?
Not readily. I mean, I, the initial, the submission that they provided us, which is part of the PowerPoint that Dave has up there, has a listing of all of the different improvements that they made. Um, and I think that, I think that was at seven and a half mils. I know at one time they talked about 10, but our, our point was, we can't, our, our ceiling is going to be seven and a half and would be, would be less, um, as far as my recommendation. Um, I guess we could, we could produce that, but I don't have it right up the top of my head.
Is that something we could ask for? They probably know.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Lisa, have you rolled it over? Anything else?
I, I tend to agree with Mr. Schaefer, I'd just like to see the staff and developers get together on the numbers and get over. I think it's a good idea, I just think we need to get into a finalized format.
I guess I'm just surprised that the infrastructure for the development goes in, and then the developers come in and say, if you want a quality development, you have to approve this thing. And if you wanted, if, if they want it to be, you know, a quality product, well, what were they thinking when they designed it and, and built all of the improvements? That's the part that I can't get my brain around, is why are we at this point of this development, after this many years, now first talking about a community authority?
Well, I think when Mr. Fisher said this, they've been talking about this for 18 months. I don't know why it hasn't hit us until the last month. I'm not sure there, Dave and, Tom and Dave Fisher have been talking about it for 18 months.
Yeah, I mean, I, right, and this is, this has come up before, it's just they, I think, when they made a decision, a financial decision, to move ahead with their infrastructure improvements, and, and I think knowing that there was no guarantee that this was going to get approved. And I think we're at the point now where we're, you know, where they don't want to be, and we don't necessarily want to be, but I don't think it was, anybody dropped the ball. I think they made a financial decision to say, we've inquired this property, let's move ahead, um, we will make our best case, uh, to the city council, and try to offset some of our costs to, to ensure that we can, I, I think they're at the point now, though, Lisa, where they have to start pricing homes. And I think now, I think it's, it, there's some threshold decisions that have to be done on their part, because they've got to make that decision. Are we going to price that lot at X, are we going to, can we price it at Y? And that's partly a function of, can we offset some of these costs, some that we have incurred and some that we haven't incurred, namely, some of the more, the bigger improvements, the recreational improvements. So I think they're at a crossroads now, and I think it will, this, you know-
I, I agree with everything that Mr. Holman said, and, and I want to assure you that-
I'm not working for the-
No, no, and I want to, I want to assure you that I, I've always felt like we were working in good faith with him, and I hope he felt the same about us. Like I say, I, I haven't gone back and looked at my calendar, but it's at least 18 months, if not two years, and he's right, we started off asking for 10, and he said that, and he and Dave Eflin said, no, we can't support more than seven and a half. That's really how we first got to the seven and a half number, we kind of hovered there for, I don't know, six or nine months, something like that. But, but he's absolutely right that, uh, we had always assumed that, uh, the day would come when we're here, and I'm sorry that, that we got the, the chicken or the egg first, whichever it go, whichever we got out of order, we got it out of order here. But, but to me, it's analogous to quite often where, in a public finance setting, where you plan to finance something, you do what's known as inducement, and later on you pay for it. So I apologize that, that we didn't kind of dig our heels in and say, we're not putting our first shovel in the ground until we force you into some agreement with us, and so we now find ourselves very compromised, and that's our fault, not yours. But I've always felt like we've dealt in good faith with Mr. Holman and he with us along the process, along the way. But you're absolutely right, Tom, it does come down to what somebody will pay for a lot and a house on a piece of property. Which, by the way, also addresses the issue that I think this young woman, uh, addressed earlier, whom, by the way, I've never met before, so thanks for coming out tonight, but she wasn't here on our behalf. But, but it is true that, and this sort of comes to Mr. Hellinger's point, do you want to pay $30,000 more upfront to support these things, and does the market support you paying $30,000 more? Or do you want to pay X amount of dollars per year for the years you own the home, and the next person pays, and the next person pays until it's paid off? It is, I always talk about, you know, it's like airing a balloon, where, where's the year going to go? There's only so much here, there's only so many dollars to go around. And the question is, how do you manage those dollars in the process to get good product in the city of Delaware for move-up housing, make it affordable, be able to have best-of-quality development in here? One of the things I will tell you, sort of, sort of an aside to all this, I'm very particular about who I do work for, but Vince Rominelli and Marty Savco, you know them both, and in particular Vince is a home builder, you know what you're going to get out here at this development. You already see it with the entrance features. I mean, they're phenomenal. That's just the way he does business, he doesn't know how to do it any other way. He's going to bring you a first-class development to the city of Delaware. Now, can I tell you that it will be exactly the same if we can't reach some compromise on this community authority? I don't know, I'm not a guy that makes threats, that's just not, I don't do business like that. But I can tell you that this is really needed to make this the quality of development we think we can make it, and you can be proud of, and we can be proud of.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I just, the general guidance is to come back with something that is, is for you to consider, and, um-
When you say come back with something-
Well, right now, they've, they have five and a half that they've, uh, put on the table. I mean, they've, they've, they have not amended their petition. They're, technically, seven and a half is there, but the revision that they made a few weeks ago, which was accompanied by a long list of, of improvements that they wanted to finance with the five and a half or the five, with the half going to the city for river access, um, that's where you're at. What I indicated to you was that, um, my concern was not overburdening the homeowners and taking a look at something between, between that five and a half and four, whatever it is, and if it's, but-
But the flip side of that, Tom, is that, are we really helping the homeowners?
No, I don't know, you might not be, you might not be. I'm just, I, I just, I, I'm concerned, that's all. But I think ultimately, um, the, the quest, the decision is yours. I mean, I think they've, they've made a, I think, a credible argument and request, and I think I can take a look at it again and, and come back to you with, with something that is, um, that I think is workable, um, and, um, for you to consider. But I, but ultimately, if it's on principle, I just don't want to support it, then nothing that I can do or they can do will change anybody's mind.
I'm trying to kind of wrap my brain around what, I'm trying to think both scenarios, and fast forward to what happens if we do this, if we do this. So if we said no, altogether, no community authority at all, we're just, no, what happens to this development? Does it go in as a development where the homes are 250 to 300,000, um, another, you know, Willowbrook Farms, Locust Curve, something that we already have? Is, is that what, and then if we were to say yes to something that Tom was coming up with, does that mean that this development becomes 350 to 450,000, because you can support those prices because of the amenities? And I'm only asking because we've never done this before, and I, I would like to know which-
I said to you earlier, I, I never make threats, it just, it never works out very well for anybody.
Not as a threat, but just as a reality for us.
Yeah, so, so it's, you, you've asked what I call an awkward question, because how I answer, I don't want it to come off to say, this is what you're going to end up purchasing this. What I can tell you is, if you work with us on the community authority, you're going to end up with the product and the quality and the amenities that you've seen on the screen. What I can tell you is, if we don't get a community authority, we're going to revisit the amenity packages, and that's probably going to result in lower home prices, because the same type of person isn't going to live there with a lesser amenity pack- isn't going to live there with lesser amenity packages than the kind of person wants to live here with the top quality amenity package we have right now. What that equates to, Ms. Keller, in terms of dollars and cents, I don't know. I mean, I don't know what that means. It's $50,000 less, or it's, I just don't know. But I can tell you that if you, if you will work with us on this, you will get what we told you we're going to provide. And we think that's a top-quality package and really top-quality amenities for people that are going to want to come and live here. I mean, you're right. The infrastructure is there. I mean, we're not going to take the pipes back out of the ground if you don't approve this. We're not going to take up the pavement. We're not going to put cows back out there, or beans or corn or whatever it used to be out there. We're not going to do any of that. I think there was an apple orchard there for a while. We're not going to do any of that. You're right. We, it's kind of shame on us. But then again, I hope you look at it a different way and say, lucky all of us that these guys believed in us and took a risk and got the development underway. And now we're two years ahead in the cycle of home building while the, while the home building cycle is really hot right now in central Ohio. And so we're going to be providing housing stock for the citizens of Delaware two, two years sooner than we would have. We dug our heels in and say, we're not putting the first shovel in the ground until we get every T, cross, and I dotted on the community authority.
I think one, the other way you can look at it as well, Lisa, is to look at the improvements that have not yet been paid for. And there's close to three to three and a half million dollars worth of unbuilt improvements. Everything from the recreational package, the pool, the, some of those things. I mean, that stuff hasn't been done. The road hasn't been built.
It's around the up, down end yet. You're right.
Is to say, what hasn't been done, if, you know, forget the stuff that's already in the ground that's been paid for, but there are significant costs that haven't been incurred yet that you might want to consider. So anyway, that would be part of my thinking, but.
I'm curious what other council members think. I mean, I'm wondering, am I just stuck in an old way of thinking that this, we've never done this before, and so I'm inherently suspicious, but trying to remain open-minded, recognizing that I do feel just inherently suspicious of something I don't understand, trying to ask questions to learn more about how this functions. But does anyone else share my, I don't know about this, but I really would like to have quality housing in the city of Delaware and provide our citizens options? I mean, I know my own family, we were looking for homes, and I was looking off of Africa Road near the Alum Creek area because there wasn't anything in this area. The neighborhoods we were looking at didn't have pools or anything like that, but they were, you know, in beautiful locations like this is, I don't know.
They had a lot more land, too, along Africa Road than what used to be.
No, the lots were pretty small. The lot, the one lot we were looking at, though, backed up to a preserve that went to Alum Creek. So, but the lots themselves were probably no bigger than these would be.
Lisa, I guess one thing I would throw out there is, this is completely new for us, but as Tom said, Hilliard and Wollonee and Union County and Powell, this is becoming a common thing because it does allow developers to build houses that they can sell at a price point that works. You know, without some of these amenities, they can sell them at a price point where they can raise the price enough to cover the amenities where the price is beyond the market. So what I see this doing is allow us to be at a price point that we don't have, with amenities that we need, and a way to support those amenities other than pack wall, front end in the price of the house. What 450,000 dollars might work at 5.5, you say maybe with 5,000. Or we don't do the amenities, and now we're at the 300, 325,000 dollar price point, which we have. That's, that's kind of the way I look at it. I, it's new to us, but I think it's a good vehicle to allow these kind of developments to occur.
Or if I'm looking to spend 400,000, I say, am I going to go in here? Or why not just go right up the road to Glen Ross where I'll have two pools? And, I mean, I can see the benefit of wanting to be competitive with other neighborhoods that we have. My needle has moved from heck no, never, no, 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 to wow.
I originally didn't like the idea at all as far as like government getting involved in something that seems optional. And I talked to a council member and pal that also owns a property in the NCA there. And, and then I think if they could confirm, I think the pack, its package as an NCA, part of the reason is for the financing because no financial institution will issue a loan based on HOA fee. Because where the NCA is, we know the money's coming. HOAs can change, you know, annually.
It's a legally secured source of payment.
Okay.
And now market-tested, we can say.
Right. So that, when I had that in my brain, that kind of made a little more sense to me why they were pursuing it the way they were. And yeah, if you can spread the cost of a service over 10, 20 years versus upfront, that's going to get a lot more people interested in it. So I started, you know, like, I've, I've come around.
It's, it's new to Delaware, but the, it's in the Ohio Revised Code. Central Ohio's done it. I think they've done it all over Ohio. So I guess, I mean, to me, it's not that revolutionary. It's just, it's new to Delaware.
I might add that, you know, I do a lot of work on the Sunbury, Bercher Township, the, all the, all the annexations to Sunbury and the stuff for the Southern Interchange, all of that has NCA system. And there's some houses like hotcakes out there. Just like there aren't a lot of other markets around central Ohio. It is a development. I think one of the things, and I'd be interested to hear what Mr. Schulman has to say about some of your guidelines, because it is a development tool. I mean, forward-thinking cities throughout central Ohio and townships are using it as a strong development tool to stay competitive in the marketplace and to provide the kind of housing that people want.
I also like the fact that it goes down to, goes, can go down once it's paid off. Who, on the board, who replaces the three developer spots? Where do those spots go to? So there are four to the city, three to the developer?
The way I think it's appropriate to think of this board is that you will have that four and three arrangement until the capital bonds are paid off.
Yeah, okay.
At that point, the way this petition is written, the developer just backs away, and you end up with all of the board members being elected like HOA.
It's probably the same people.
The developer has no interest in hanging around. I mean, the project's built up, the infrastructure improvement's been funded.
They're paid back.
It's like an HOA. Why is the developer going to hang around HOA and fully develop community?
And, and what will happen with the city's initial appointees? Because you don't have the residents out there right now, as you're mixing selections. And over time, as you get residents, the city will find itself likely wanting to begin the process of moving toward resident governance by taking some pit slots and making those appointments of residents for two years in charge.
All right, thank you.
I know being in the, you know, doing some of the closings that I do, I hear a lot of people that there's just no houses to move up in Delaware, so they move elsewhere, unfortunately. So, I mean, I hear it all the time. I think it's necessary, and if this is what it's going to take, I'm going to support it.
I just want to make sure it's actually move up. So if it's approved, I know you can't give specific numbers, but if it's approved the way that it's currently, where are we at now? Seven and a half, five and a half?
They have revised, not officially, but they have offered five and a half, with half a mil going to the city.
If it were approved at five and a half, are we looking at 350s or are we looking at 500s? And I know you can't, you have to.
There's different price points throughout this, Kelly. I think the, the Terre Haute, the first base right now is probably 354. Some of the later areas will be nudging above four. The, the Rogers property, those will be well in excess of that because those are going to be big lots, a lot of green, those could be, I don't know, 600,000, something like that. I mean, the Stockdale lots are going to be in the five to 600,000.
And all of those are OLSD.
On tangi.
Right. Right. But move-up housing within the city school district has been one of the drivers, I think, of our consideration.
And the numbers we provided you, and these were provided by the builder at that time, based on the numbers that we had at that time, you would be looking at single-family with an average of 375. That's in Terre Alta. That would be 210 homes in that price point range, 136 condos at 275, empty nesters at 350. So total.
That's the Delaware City School.
That's Delaware City School.
And I think it's the single-family homes you have to focus on in terms of the move-up house.
Yes, the move-up housing, yeah. But we also don't have a lot of empty nester, trust me.
Right. But if you have kids in the school system, you don't want to, you want to keep them in the system.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's what you're trying to provide the option.
Your points were made.
Say, they're not, the point made that they're not showing them MLS because they're, you know, either spec homes or they're being built to, to work, so they're not showing up. But that, those price points are actively being built in the city today.
I think so. I mean, the new section.
375?
But none of them are there yet, but.
Can you comment on that down there, Dave?
I think they're a little bit less than that. Down in the Glen Ross area, stuff you are seeing, 350 to 450 plus, that's on tangi district. I mean, the market is hot right now, as Mr. Fisher said, too. So you have to, have to factor that in. Hopefully, it's that way for a long time, but probably won't be.
The way materials are going up, they'll probably go up in price anyways. I mean, it's just unreal.
I tend to think if these houses were right now on the market, you stand a good chance in Delaware City School District or on tangi of getting even higher prices than Mr. Schaefer's.
We tried to be somewhat conservative on this. I mean, you know, it was to give you an idea of tax revenues and projections and things like that. And then we also did the analysis with regard to the income stream, the, the household income, which is significantly higher than anything that we have on average in the city of Delaware. Just to buy, just to buy single-family homes, you know, under traditional financing, in, in Terre Alta would be $165,000 household income. And, and it goes up from there. I mean, it's, but you know, you're, I think the point's well taken that, that the mayor made and Dave made is is that you really won't know until you start building and you start looking, people start, you know, the pre-buy, or the builders that pre-buy, they're, they're going to be very cognizant of that. But everything is going up. Prices are just moving.
Thank you.
Okay, you asked for a report from this, or from council, if you have anything else? Okay, then let's slide.
We'll follow up.
You'll follow up.
Have to come back and.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, need a public hearing.
Okay, so let's read item 11, 8 o'clock public hearing. Oops.
Ordinance number 18-88, an ordinance amending section 549.08 of the City of Delaware codified ordinances relating to pointing and discharging firearms.
Dave, is this Darren?
Neither.
Mayor, members of council, I'm getting a little sick or something. We talked about this a little bit last meeting, but this would change our prohibition on discharging firearms in the city to carve out a very limited exception, which would allow institutional uses that are also approved by zoning that are brought into the city to continue operating as they are. Does provide a safeguard because just because you're using it now and you annex, and you still need to have that zoning permission. So council would always be able to approve that use in addition to, obviously, you could decide not to annex that property. Dave, am I missing anything?
I think one of the critical pieces is that it's pre-existing. And as Darren mentioned, you would get a companion piece of legislation for zoning in each of these cases. Right now, it's the Camp Lazarus is really what we're talking about. It's not just for gun ranges, but the BB range and the archery range that are pre-existent in that one key.
Any questions by council? Is there any of the public that would like to come forward this time? See, now we'll call the public hearing. Do you want to take a third reading? You want to some on it tonight?
I think we laid it out.
Yeah, the schedule we had laid out is that if you want to take this to the 22nd, that would dovetail this with the final date of the annexation.
All right, let's do that. Okay, let's move on to item 13. May I feel pleased to read this for the record?
Ordinance number 18-89, an ordinance amending section 917.14 of the sanitary sewer, sewer regulations of the Streets Utilities and Public Services Code to add a 50% surcharge for non-city customers.
Madam Mayor, yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, this, while this is a second reading, I've had a number of questions come to me that I want to make sure we're all clear on the facts here. So this, this is a surcharge for sewer only at the moment. There has already been a longstanding surcharge for water, and the ordinance was passed in 2001, almost exactly this, this exact date in 2001, actually. So 17 years we've had that one. This is catching the sewer ordinances up. We've, we've not had many sewer residents outside of the city. We have seven to date, but this is, this is a matter of stance for the city. This is, this doesn't do a whole lot for the public utility department. But I think one thing you can attest to very strongly is that utilities are the driver of, of city growth, especially sewer. To, to just, to put them in place and to not have a reason for people to have to annex is, is just one frame of mind. But this is, again, this is just a stance of the city, that utilities are going to continue to be the, the driving expander of, of the city boundaries. So.
Just a point of clarification, that the surcharge has been in place much longer than, it may have been amended or something in 01, but it, it goes back to, I don't know, when you probably established the utility. This is the first time for, for sewer. George, you had a question about how the billing?
Well, yeah, just knowing that the 50% surcharge based on if they have Delco water.
Correct.
And then if, so there becomes that issue of knowing, figuring out what that usage is, but then also the rate. So, you know, I would think that if the city water rate, let's say, was higher per 100 cubic feet than Delco, that we would take the Delco usage.
This is sewer.
I, I understand. But, but I'm, are we?
It's based on how much water you use, not how much the cost is. So we get the total amount of water from Delco and apply our sewer cost to that.
Okay, it's quantity. All right. So as long, yeah, as long as it's only quantity.
Yep.
But then how, how would we know, how would we know how much your, what's that mechanism to get that usage from another utility?
We just, we have an open working relation with Delco while, so it does, you know, there is a little bit of time lapse. The county residents who use our sewer, and we get Delco numbers, they are a month behind on the billing, but it is still real usage billing.
Okay.
It's, it's not estimated. It's.
It's actual, actual reading.
Correct.
We basically have done this since 1981. And a few strugglers come in, they couldn't, you know, they, their systems just failed. They offered it with condition that if they become contiguous.
This is subject to a public hearing, is the next meeting, right?
Next meeting, yes.
Okay, right. So it will be considered and acted on at the third reading.
Did anybody else have questions for Mike? You said you had several that came in.
I, I think it was just points of clarification. The questions from, from Mr. Hellinger came to me. The, the questions from, from Mr. Hellinger came to me and-
Right. All right, so is there anyone in the public that would like, it's not a public hearing?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's next one.
Maybe people really want to talk about sewer.
Okay, let's read item 14. We're reading an ordinance number 18-80.
Ordinance number 18-80, an ordinance accepting the annexation of 221.341 plus or minus acres of land, more or less description and map are attached here to exhibit A and B to the annexation known as the Central Ohio Boy Scouts of America Camp Lazarus annexation by Michael R. Shae, agent for the petitioners.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is the third reading, and I guess we'd ask you to take it to a fourth reading. Again, on the 22nd dovetail with the, the third reading of the, the piece of legislation just a few moments ago in the annexation as well. That would allow the applicant to have a first reading of the zoning before Planning Commission on the 17th.
We could have covered on that and the other one tonight.
Could have, the applicant-
Lot, lot of moving parts.
Yeah, the applicant had wanted at least the Planning Commission, hopefully, action on that zoning on the 17th. Ideally, the zoning, the annexation, and the other piece would all be before you in the same meeting, but it's just the calendar that got there.
Anybody have any questions on that annexation? Okay, see you on the 22nd.
Yes, I, I just want to point out that we have people here tonight. If you have any technical questions with regard to the property or anything, they're here to answer.
Do you want to guys, since you've sat here this long, would you like to say anything? No?
Are you with the Boy Scouts? Maybe you could just come forward and just give us an update on, on the-
You had a busy weekend down there.
We did.
By Saturday, I can believe all the cars.
I'm Jeff Muller, I'm with the Simon County Council Boy Scouts at 807 Keneer Road in Columbus.
And I'm Philip Smut, I'm the facilities director, and I was item 44, 22 Columbus by the Delaware.
And we are just, you know, going through the process here for, for annexing the property into the city. We are in progress with some sanitary sewer connection and just look forward to the completion of the process and happy to answer any questions if, if there are any.
Are they going to our sewer system?
Yes.
So we really need to get that thing to go back because we're next in the middle. Any questions?
Are there any other plans for any other facility expansion? I know AEP building was done a few years back. Is there anything else in the works, master plan wise, that would-
We have, we have a small cabin in prog, in progress right now with a slab poured and just waiting to get walls and roof up and-
We're, we're bound by a conservation agreement with a limited expansion growth.
Is that the one with preservation parks?
Monitor by preservation parks through the Ohio EPA. So we have a limited, limited development agreement that would preclude us from expanding new programs.
Might be fun to have our next retreat there, just thought.
You're welcome. We'd love to host you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 15, which is the sixth reading of resolution 18-50.
This is ready to be, we recommend council's adoption of the CIP. I'm sorry she didn't read it.
Resolution number 18-50, a resolution adopting the 2019 through 2023 five-year capital improvement program, the CIP.
Yes, we recommend, at, at long last, you adopt the CIP and obviously, there might be some further changes with respect to, as we move forward into the budget process, but we recommend that what we presented to you more recently is adopted with those changes that we have made.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve resolution 1850, second.
A motion by Mr. Rohr, maybe you jump right in, or second by Mr. Schaefer. Call please. Mrs. Keller? Yes. Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
Yes.
And real quickly, item one, issue one, I know there was some email conversation regarding whether to consider taking a position on issue one. And if you were to do that, you'd probably want to do it at the next council meeting. And council, the staff can draft a, a resolution. I think one of the things that makes it particularly concerning to the city is that a number of the F4, F5 felonies would become misdemeanors and therefore would end up in municipal court. It would impact our staffing of our prosecution, our prosecutors, and I know that that might be reflected in the upcoming budget process, but that is a, that's a concern. The bigger concern I have is just using the state constitution as a vehicle to set public policies at bad precedent, and it shouldn't be, shouldn't be for this or for anything else. But, but beyond that, this does have implications, negative implications for the city because of what happens at the, in the, where Kyle works in the, in the prosecutor's office now gets shifted to the city. And so that, that really hits home. So if we were to draft anything for your consideration, I think we would refer to that, among other things. So that's, so do you want, is there an interest in having that matter at least be considered for the 22nd?
I'm very interested in that.
Yeah, I mean, not, yeah, you don't have to, okay, so we can, we'll, we'll draft something up like on that. I left at your place setting tonight, a, the conference program for the ICMA conference that I recently attended. Take a look at it when you get a chance, these are always outstanding conferences, and that'll be captured in my year-end report on credentialing, and I'll provide that to you. There's a Sister City luncheon, I think, later this week, that I, Thursday, that the mayor will be able to attend, I'm going to try to get there as well. And the All in Tangi Watershed Forum, which is this year in the city of Delaware and has been organized a lot by Carolyn Sichurchi, our sustainability coordinator, is, is taking place on Wednesday, and that's exciting. And then lastly, I want to give Dave Afflin and his staff kudos for an award that we recently received by the Ohio Chapter of the American Planning Association. There's some, there's a, outside council chambers, you'll see the award. It was really for best, it kind of validated what we all knew. And Dave, maybe you can talk about it, but kudos to Dave and his staff and others who helped put that together.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. I know the hour's late, but this, not too much for awards, but this is kind of a big deal. There were an inaugural awards process through APA Ohio, that's our professional organization of planners and citizen planners. 13 communities were nominated in some different categories. Four communities were awarded a designation, an award of a great place in Ohio, which dovetails with the National APA Awards. They do this on a national scale as well. This is for Ohio, but this is an inaugural award that will only be given every two years at our Ohio, Kentucky, and Indiana annual gathering. And we, we were first selected by an eight-member awards committee, independent awards committee. And so you saw some of the material out there, but they also provided us a nice board, plaque, if you will, and it is for, for downtown. It's really to honor outstanding physical spaces throughout the state that planners have created and nurtured through careful planning. But what I would tell you is that we certainly have played a role in that, not just I, but many planners in the city through many years, but it's really our property owners, our business owners, many city staff, Main Street, Delaware, and, and really, in a word, our community that has led to this award. And I don't look at it as kind of a culmination, I look at it as an affirmation of what we've done. And I, and as I said, when we received this in Cincinnati here recently, ain't seen nothing yet. It really is a big deal.
Okay, Mrs. Keller? I have nothing. You have nothing? Wow. Should I have something?
Who's going to report on Sister City?
Um, I will if you want me to. I think you should. We went to Baumholder, we had a great time. I can show pictures if you want, just tell me what you want. We learned a lot about the way that their city operates. It's very, very different than the way our city operates. They contract all of their city services through the Verbunska Minder, which is their county. So all of these smaller villages, Baumholder's only 4,000 people. So that makes sense for them to have all of their city employees work for the county, and then they pay the taxes collected to the county to provide all of the services for the city of Baumholder and for all of the surrounding cities and villages. Works because they're a lot smaller than we are. So they were very warm hosts, had a wonderful time, and then they've been here for 10 days. My guests, we traveled to New York and Canada. It was interesting to cross the border with German citizens. There are no borders. When I was in Europe, we traveled to Luxembourg, Belgium, France, Netherlands, open borders. It was like traveling from state to state with a "Welcome to the Netherlands" sign, and that was it, as opposed to our heavily, heavily guarded border between the US and Canada. We had no troubles and, you know, showed them both sides of the falls, went to a cabin in New York and just hung out. It was much cooler there, I don't know what happened to the weather when we came home, but we had a lovely time. And I think that there is great value in these partnerships. I would love to see us take the Sister City Board and perhaps make it a independent of the city board so that it has the ability to get sponsorship and fundraisers so that there is a greater ability to perhaps expand the program, maybe send more youth and open up more of an exchange, because it's wonderful for city officials to go, but I think it's also wonderful to expand our horizons and know that America is not the only place on the face of the earth. Other people do things and think things a lot differently than ours, and it can enrich our own understanding of our world. So I'd love to see more students be able to go also.
All right, I did go with you, and he's not a city official.
Yes.
But somebody else had an idea to spin off this and make it a 501(c)(3), so it could actually raise money and people could do it that way too. So there's some different ideas floating around about that.
I would love that, and I would be the first to volunteer and say that I'd love to be a part of that if there was a spot to further that cause, because I think it's wonderful.
I, I did not get to attend the Entrepreneurial Center opening. Was there anything? Could you give us a quick 30-second version on that?
Yeah, I kind of passed over that, and that was a very significant milestone for the city, the county, and the university. The Entrepreneurial Center was in the works for the last couple of years, and they cut the ribbon last Thursday at a dedication, which Carolyn was able to attend, representatives from the county. It's really a collaboration between the three, but it's principally going to be run by the university. It's an extension of their Volta Monte Center and their business program, but will allow for members of our community who are interested in being, becoming entrepreneurs that might have ideas of things they want to do, things they want to build, programs. It's a resource. It will be a resource not only for the university, but for the community and the county, and it's, it will complement the co-hatch space that we're, the co-working space that will be opening before the end of the year. So it's really exciting. And there was, interestingly, a number of the comments made, one by the former director of the Volta Monte Center that was there for years, talked about how many discussions they'd had about, we need to get an entrepreneurial center, let's figure out a way to do that. And with the city and the county coming together with the university, it finally made that happen. And according to President Jones, it's, it's the first ever entrepreneurial center that's a combination of a city, a county, and a university. So thanks for asking and reminding me about that.
And Sean will also have an office there, so he'll share his time. And at the, the opening, there was a, a young man who talked about something that he has just recently invented with money going back to Haiti and how it's come full circle, plastic and all that. And I talked to him afterwards, thinking he had graduated. He's a freshman at Ohio Wesleyan, he's like, wow! So he's like the first one in there. It was really exciting, pretty amazing.
We've got some pictures that we can share with Lee and get those, get those online.
Oh, himself is really nice. Beautiful.
Mr. Brown? George?
Nothing.
Sorry.
Just a hats off to Elaine for all the work with this. I mean, she had some family stuff going on, and I mean, this thing was planned to be, of course, everything.
Thank you, it was actually a lot of fun, and I had so much help from all the staff. Adam Moore, he's a fan favorite by them, so I appreciate the tour. I think he put them in the jail, not sure.
They went to the cupola, the top of the cupola for the State House, courtesy of-
I mean, everybody really just came together and come out, and I had so much fun, I really did. A lot of tears at the end. Not because of the week, but really felt a good relationship with them.
Cheers when they left, that's all. Okay, well, I just, I just know this week was fantastic, and I, I do appreciate everything Elaine did, and with that, she's going to take off, starting tomorrow, she'll be gone for a week to try to recuperate from everything she's done, she's worked around the clock on this. We had a really good meeting, Tom and I did, with the two bands, the district mayor, the Burgermeister, and with the mayor, and figuring out where we go on our next step, how we bring some of their arts over here, how we start exchanging students, not necessarily with, they don't have a high school anymore in Baumholder, but I mean, look, the whole district, finding students that are at the various different high schools that live in Baumholder. So try to exchange that way, and talked about exchanging-
Possibly a program for directors, perhaps. I know there's a lot of interest in how their public safety works, how their fire department works and others, so there might be an opportunity that way as well, but also for the community, residents being able to take advantage of it, so.
And in 2020, Jay Martin will be taking another group of soccer students over to Baumholder. And it's really nice because one of our visitors has hosted Wesleyan students as long as I can remember, and those students came to the game on Wednesday night, and there was one that was 32 years old, and he's come back, they have not forgotten the relationship they've got. So I just think the friendship that we have with Baumholder is just phenomenal, so.
And with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Do you want to go back?
Ten minutes. Bill, can you, you want to stay here? You want to stay in here?
You'd like to what?
You can.
I have two Germans waiting.
Okay.
Ten minutes.
At the most.
So do you want to move to go in?
Yeah, we'll wait till they leave, but we'll just sit right here.
Oh, you're going to go here?
Join this off with me, you're going to make the motion?
Yeah, just make the motion now, so then you can turn the recorder off.
I'll make the motion with the executive session.
Is there a second? Get that.
You to Baumholder.
So we're in section 909, yeah, okay, all in favor? Okay, turn the microphones off.
Well, we, we might-